Very good.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Oh, that echo is weird. Welcome to the school committee meeting of March 1st, 2023. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WHCA. It's not on the agenda, but I'm sure you'll all be okay with this. I did, in speaking with Jeff, want us to take a moment of silence for both the Wojak and Davis families who both lost family members over the last couple of weeks. So if you could please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is in its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay. Welcome to come up to the podium later if you have anything you'd like to speak about. All right, we have a bunch of meeting minutes, some cleanup here and a bunch of minutes. So I think I got them all listed in my notes here. If I miss any or I get the wrong dates, please someone shout out. The first one I have is a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 22nd, 2022.
Had we already done that? I thought we had amended it at one point within other minutes.
I'll defer to.
We showed that it was amended.
I'd have to go back and check, I'm not sure.
They need to be amended.
What is it?
They need to be amended.
Oh, these were the ones that needed to be amended.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Was this the one?
Okay, so we never voted to accept them.
Correct. No, I think we did. Was this the one that we thought you were at and you weren't at? Is this the June?
I don't remember, quite frankly. All I know is I knew we had taken action on them.
Yeah, I was wondering why the June ones were in there, and that would make sense. I knew there was some confusion when we went back and forth where there was a meeting that I think you thought you were at and you weren't at. And if that's the case, then I think we need to.
And I see that there. So motion to accept as presented.
Well, so, but we, so, I guess I need some practical legal guidance on, are we, because we already approved them, so.
So if we approved them, they're showing the amended version.
I think this is the amended version.
That's the amended version. So if we approve them as amended?
Yes, how about we do that?
That's what I thought.
Yes, can we do that motion, Fred, please?
Would you like the motion to approve as amended?
Thank you very much, yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Roll call.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. I'm going to, we'll do a roll call vote on this one, then I have an idea. So Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Beth.
Yes.
Great. Unanimous. What is the committee's pleasure about trying to group these together so that we pull them all? A motion to accept them all and then?
I'll make a motion to approve December 7th, 2022 minutes, January 11th, 2023, January 25th, 2023, and February 1st, 2023.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on those four? Yes.
So I think this was why the other one needed to be amended too for the executive session, just I was out and it's not noted.
Okay, which one?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
Which month?
January 11th.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion to amend those to reflect the fact that you weren't here?
Yes, can I make that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Beth.
Yes.
Okay. Now the motion is to approve all of those minutes, I'm not going to recite it again, with the amendment.
Some more.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes, yes.
Beth, Fred, Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I thought you were saying yes. Oh, yes, sorry, Beth, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Are we voting, it's a little bit hard for me to hear, are we voting on the 25th?
So we're voting on the minutes of December 7th, January 11th, January 25th as amended, and February 1st.
Okay. Okay, this 25th one that was the teacher's presentation, it says that I am, I was present and I was absent.
Okay.
And I was absent, I wasn't present, and it says the same for Fred, and David, and Steve, and me.
Thank you.
So I was absent, but after he did on January 25th.
Which wasn't really anything, that was the.
Yeah, it was a workshop.
Right, it was a workshop. Okay, was everyone else accurately?
You know what, though, the meetings say that, I'm sorry, it says like Fred is present and then it says members absent, Fred is absent.
Showing me as absent.
Yeah, it's showing us present and absent, and it's showing Beth as.
Yes.
Present and absent.
Oh, point of order, it was a workshop, and that we need to vote it all.
We don't need to vote that at all.
I know, but we have, let's just, how about, I know, we're in a quiet room, so, just as, since we already have a motion and it's already being floated, can we just get a motion to amend the January 25th minute, meeting minutes to reflect who was there and who was not there? So who needs to be changed from?
I was absent.
So Fred is listed as present and should not be.
Yeah.
Beth, you were listed as present and should not be?
I was absent.
Okay.
David's listed as absent.
Who was absent?
Were you at the meeting?
No, I was absent.
And Steve. So I think it was just they were shown, I think the members absent are accurately reflected, but they were reflected incorrectly as members present.
Got you.
So I'd be looking for a motion to amend the January 25th meetings to remove the following members from the present listing, and those members would include Steve Boyce, David Forrest, Fred Small, and Beth Stafford.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Oh, wait, hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. Are we voting on the February 15th?
On the amendments of, sorry, we're.
This is just.
February 15th does not even include it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I didn't include February 15th. Okay, thank you.
Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Beth.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a couple of amended, and now we're going to take those all as amended. So we got 12, 7, 111, 125, and 21. Any discussion on those with the amendments? Fantastic. Roll call vote. Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
And Beth.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a couple of amended, and now we're going to take those all as amended. So we got 12, 7, 111, 125, and 21. Any discussion on those with the amendments? Fantastic. Roll call vote. Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
Michelle. David.
Yes.
Yes.
And Beth. I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Glenn. Okay, so now we have a couple of amended, and now we're going to take those all as amended.
Yes.
Yes.
Dawn. So we got 12, 7, 111, 125, and 21.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Any discussion on those with the amendments? And Beth.
Yes.
Fantastic. Roll call vote. Okay, so now we have a couple of amended, and now we're going to take those all as amended. Fred.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
So we got 12, 7, 111, 125, and 21. Hillary.
Yes.
David. Any discussion on those with the amendments?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Fantastic. Glenn. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Fred. Dawn.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris. Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Hillary. And Beth.
Yes.
Okay, so that amendment passes. David. Sniffing, you have an amendment?
Yes.
I do, so again, the executive session, I would just like to make an amendment to
I'll vote yes.
have it reflect that I was not in the room for the executive session.
Glenn.
Yes.
Dawn.
Second.
Yes.
Any discussion on that? Michelle.
Yes.
Okay. Beth.
Yes.
Fred, Chris. Okay, the amendment now, the both amendments pass.
Yes.
So we are now voting on the February 15th with two amendments. Hillary.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Any discussion? Glenn. Hesitate to ask.
Yes.
Okay, great. Dawn. You got it right?
Yes.
Hey, we're doing it right. Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Fred, Chris, Hillary. Beth.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment now, the both amendments pass. David. So we are now voting on the February 15th with two amendments.
Yes.
Any discussion? I'll vote yes. Hesitate to ask.
Yes.
Okay, great. Glenn, Dawn. You got it right?
Yes.
Hey, we're doing it right. Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Fred, Chris, Hillary. Beth.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment now, the both amendments pass. David. So we are now voting on the February 15th with two amendments.
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Any discussion?
Yes.
Hesitate to ask. Glenn, Dawn. Okay, great.
Yes.
You got it right? Michelle. Hey, we're doing it right.
Yes.
Yes.
And Beth. Fred, Chris, Hillary.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all right, got them done. David. Not sure it was any faster, but we got them done, so thank you all.
Yes.
All right, I'll turn it over to Jeff. I'll vote yes.
Thanks, thanks, Chris.
Yes.
So everybody's in a yes mood, so we're going to say yes on the budget now, I like that.
Glenn, Dawn.
So just a budget update, John's going to come up, made some changes. The cherry sheet came out last week, there are some things in your packet, and John knows specifically what page they are, but just updates that are different from last week, so we can discuss these today, or, go ahead, John, you're right up, or we can wait till next week. But they are, updates from the cherry sheet that he has, there is going to be an update on Hold Harmless for next Wednesday. The Budget Subcommittee is taking that on Monday at our Budget Subcommittee meeting, and I know that was a topic of discussion, and the cherry sheet does reflect some changes to Hold Harmless. So John, if you can give your update, please.
Sure, thank you. So on Document A in your packet was the changes that had happened since February 15th.
Can you hold up Document A?
Sure. It's small print, it's at the end if you were on your, if you were on the drive.
It's the last one.
Is it in this or the drive?
Sorry, we have a bunch of, we have a packet.
I've got it right here in the drive.
Just Document A in the drive?
Yes.
Just give everyone a minute.
It's the last one, because I numbered them, and then this was the last one after the mall.
Got it.
And it's a, it's a.
Document A, last one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does everyone have it?
Yeah. I'm getting it. Just talk about it in general, on Document A, it has the changes to the budget.
And for, actually, just, I think, it's the very last page.
It's the very last one.
It's the very last page in your hard copy. If you can't find it online. All right, sorry, John.
That's okay. So the changes were, I've listed them all here since February 15th's presentation of the budget. The two that are hitting the expense side are the school choice and charter schools, those were general fund cherry sheet charges, state aid charges, and I had $200,000 in for a placeholder budget back on February 15th, and it ended up being 208,962, so that's an $8,962 increase to the budget. And then district-wide charter schools, I had $950,000 in as a budget. When the cherry sheet came out, it was, the state aid, it was 1.19 million, 240,314 up. So that's an additional $249,276 to the expenditures on the budget. The next group are revenue changes. Chapter 70 aid went up, I'm sorry, went down from my estimate, $18,000, and charter school reimbursement went up, $40,000. Non-mandated and, and, sorry, Hanson non-mandated busing and Whitman non-mandated busing, that was just an Excel error on my part that didn't bring over those correct amounts. The total of all those changes are 8,000, and then the next grouping are operating budget changes, and that's where the, when the governor released her budget, I think she officially did it today, but I think it was last Thursday, it was given to us by DESI and the GOR. The required minimum contribution from Hanson, I had 10.6 in there, and it was slightly the last $48,000, less than what I had estimated. Whitman, Whitman's required minimum contribution, I had 12.566, and it was 12.554. And then the student count came out from DESI, and Hanson student count, I had 1344, and Whitman 2,068, or 39.39% in my estimate for Hanson, and a 60.61% estimate for Whitman. What happened was, it was a 1,390 student count for Hanson, 2,180 count for Whitman, so we're up 46 students in Hanson and 112 students in Whitman, and the percentage shifted from 39.39, 60.61, to 38.94, 61.06. So it's a half, almost a half a percent, and that's from the actual DESI numbers that came out. Operation number seven, the regional school transport, I had 90% in there. I went back in and took a look at it again, and I did the math again, and it should be 87%. So what I was saying at the last meeting, I think, we were talking about the reimbursement for '25, that is at 85%, but the request is, the budget is at 87% of projected for this year, in the FY '24 budget. So I was saying, I think I was saying 85, it was 87. And I had 90 on the sheet.
On the overall, though, correct?
Yes. And then just some corrections on the Hanson Middle School bond anticipation note interest, and also some corrections that Ms. Otten here had pointed out on the, some of the documents that weren't budget-related, but they weren't linking properly, so thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. So that's, that's pretty much the change of what has happened since we last met, $249,276 increase of the budget. If you turn to document number two, anywhere when you look through the budget, if you see it's highlighted in yellow, it means the number or the wording changed. So if you're, you want to know what changed, just look for anything in yellow. If you have a black and white copy, it's a bit darker than everything else, I guess. So document number two of the, shows the operating assessments, so right now, the operating assessments for Hanson would be a 6.47% increase, and Whitman would be a 7.78% increase, on a $60,484,108, $69 set budget. One of the things that.
Excuse me, what page did you read that on?
Document number two.
I'm sorry?
Document two?
Document two, yes.
Click the fourth or fifth page.
Yeah, fifth page, Beth.
Okay.
So it's a 3.41% increase over last year's budget as of right now. And then the rest of the documents are just updates to the, you know, what had been passed out on February 15th, except for the last three, which hadn't come out until, you know, the, until the governor had released her budgets, her budget. And the last three documents are the actual cherry sheet estimate of state aid from the Department of Revenue, the split of pupils between Hanson and Whitman and from DESI, and then a hold harmless chart. That was one of the things that did come out of this, is that our hold harmless decreased significantly, as you can see on the, on the chart. I think we had talked about it, I know we had talked about it in Budget Subcommittee, and I think we had talked about it here at the full committee, that what would happen when we added kindergarten, what would happen when we add low income into our foundation budget, and it looks like those were two major reasons why our foundation budget went up, and that's part of the reason why we're, have such a small hold harmless number going down. It went, it dropped significantly as you can see on the chart.
So on that hold harmless, I know Budget Subcommittee is going to dive into it, and we're going to talk a little bit more next Wednesday. That, right now, is a benefit for us, really, going forward, not in FY '24, but we haven't got much state aid in Chapter 70, because we've been at a 3.6, or a $4.6 million hold harmless rate over the past couple of years. That has kind of reduced down to about $500, $600,000.
I think it's $550,000, I believe.
So moving forward, hopefully, we will join the likes of our, you know, next-door neighbor of Abington getting $1.2 million in state aid, Bridgewater ran in $3.2 million in state aid in the future to maybe help the towns out. But right now, and I think one of our, we were talking a little bit after our operations meeting, it's kind of like we're making up $3.4 million this year in hold harmless. And that, and again, I'm going to, we're going to go over it more next week with maybe some graphs and some charts, but our enrollment rose, enrollment rose because we actually have full daycare now, and that counts for us. Our EL population counts for us, and our low income counts for us, plus inflation. So it's a good thing, and hopefully, we can get out of this hold harmless, which we've been talking about for three years, and really start to see some Chapter 78 coming to our communities. Correct? I didn't want to jump in too much.
No, that's okay. The governor's budget is, the only increase is a $30 per student at the moment.
Questions, Dawn and then Fred?
Yeah, Jeff, you hit the nail on the head. The Student Opportunity Act's finally come into fruition a little bit, seeing it through hold harmless. I just wanted to mention that in the foundation budget enrollment, when you go online, that's what shows that we had 158 increased enrollment or increased population. But I want to make sure folks who are listening or hear this, we didn't actually add 158 more kids to Whitman and Hanson. It's a, it's a formula with the foundation enrollment where a kindergarten student the prior year was actually only counted as a half a student for enrollment numbers, and now that they are a full student, it's kind of odd, they really did count them as half, and now they're counted enrollment-wise as a full person. So those 200 kindergartners now technically are kind of like 300.
300.
So, or they were 100, now they're kind of 200, so forgive me, half. So I think that's important. I don't want people to say, wow, we got 90 more students moved into Whitman, you know, they didn't, but, but it serves a good purpose for calculating that, that foundation aid going forward. So that's really, that's great.
Just to give John some credit, I mean, the cherry sheets came in, he was pretty accurate on all his estimates, all his estimates going forward. And this area, and again, the budget was at a 2.98% two weeks ago, the cherry sheet came in, and we, there was a lower estimate in charter school, charter school funding, and that had a direct impact to this budget, which pushed it up a little bit. We didn't add anything over the past two weeks. You know, we didn't add any program, we didn't talk about anything. It's the same, same dollars and cents as we presented, but now, when the governor's budget comes out, or the cherry sheet comes out, it's, it's an actual, it's not a guest estimate. And again, I want to give John a lot of credit, because his guest estimates were pretty right on from December on, but you don't know until the actuals.
I just want to add one more thing I had forgotten about, was if you look at the cherry sheet, the state aid list, it says for regional school transportation, it says zero. That doesn't mean we're going, not going to be getting any aid whatsoever, we are going to be getting aid. So I haven't, they get their numbers off the end of the year report, and I haven't filed the end of the year report, we got an extension due to our data breach. So, you know, when we, when I file it, which I'm almost ready to file it, I'm very close to being done, then that'll populate in the next iteration of the budget. It's not like they've cut our regional transportation, school transportation to zero.
Thank you for clarifying, Fred.
That was exactly my question, but also sped, same thing in the year report?
Yes.
Anyone else? Just, I guess the only question I wanted to ask real quick, so when we talked about the audit district placement cost and the increase in that 13% or so, is that reflected in this document two or not?
I don't believe so. No. So that's still. Because it's still not, that's not a definite yet.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, so that's not within the operating budget, where A, it's not definite, and then B, you're still thinking that that may be an alternative funding source outside of the operating budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just didn't get your question, Chris, sorry.
So the, in previous meetings, we've talked about the audit district placement for the state, the providers, there's a significant increase of like 13%.
It's 14.
14%. And it's how much, like?
650.
650,000. So I just wanted to, I just was trying to figure out if that was in here or still outside, So I just wanted to, I just was trying to figure out if that was in here or still outside, and it is still outside. So the numbers that we see here with the 3.41% budget increase here over a year, that does not include the 650, that's still off to the side, so.
Right.
Got some work to do. John?
Yeah, if we're just staying on budget, I did want to ask you about ESER.
Yes.
Because last year, and I'm pulling out this paper that was from March 11th to 22, and you had given us a good analysis last year over the salaries that were in ESER, and that was, you know, math interventionists, the BCBA specialist, English learner teachers, tech coach, and secondary interventionist. So we didn't, I don't see an updated document of the ESER positions in here. Are they in the packet somewhere?
I think they are.
There's document 25 that spells out the various ESER funds, but I don't see anything that...
Labels of people.
Right, I mean, so if you go, it's like towards, go towards the end, it's like maybe seven or eight pages from the end?
There's seven, correct.
Yeah, I was just going to say, wasn't it in the February 1st presentation?
Okay.
But we can update that document though, Don, too, as well.
Let me see, ESER, so ESER 3.
So it shows the funds, it just doesn't show the positions.
Okay, so it's 2.3 million, right, with the awarded ESER 3. And last year you had given, this document had 540,000 for FY '23. And then this budget, FY '24, we're voting on, was another 550,000. So that's like a million that you identified as ESER 3, but we got 2.3 million. So I'm really asking, you know, where's the other million that we're got, that's hitting the fiscal cliff, that we're funding somewhere, positions that will not be funded the next year?
Can I just see that document that you have? I don't...
It's document number 25. Oh, oh, sorry, got it. Here, one second, I'll let John try and get caught up here. He took a picture.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Photograph.
Photographic memory.
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, we don't have any documents because they don't exist anymore, but I could create that document again.
Yep.
Got it.
Yeah, because according to document 25, ESER 3 shows the award, but then it doesn't show any expenditures.
So if we could have that for our next week's meeting?
Sure.
That would be helpful. On the, just on the, I don't know if this is what you're looking for, Don, but from the presentation from February 1st on slide 14, it says ESER money used in FY '24, and it lists a BCBA at 67,000, ELL teachers at 125, and interventionist at 268. I don't think it's as detailed as that, but it has, and then district professionals. So it has positions and money with it.
But we'll create this document too, to make it clear.
Yeah, because essentially, this FY '24 budget is...
Is it?
Is the last, we can use that 2.3 million. So if we can see an accounting of what we funded with, for all that 2.3 million? Over time?
Yeah.
Yeah, over time, right, because it started in FY '24.
To the best of our knowledge, we will. We had those. We presented last year. Also, remember that both ESER 1, ESER 2, and ESER 3 had components not only of human resources, but it also had components of things such as stipends, things such as equipment, things such as technology and all of those pieces. But if you're asking what's happening and where we're going, and then what we need to look for in the next budget as far as human resources in order to keep what we're doing going, next week, I believe, we'll be presenting on our interventionists, we'll be presenting on how our students are doing, we'll actually talk about like students and stuff, and like education, and we'll talk about some growth of things. And then the end of that is going to be, so what happens, or what's the task, or the financial responsibility, or the budgetary implications for this group as we end ESER and as we look at formulating the FY '25 budget? Because there is a human fiscal cliff that we will be imploring you all to look at, because what's happening for our students are positive gains, and we are helping all of our students learn. So we'll discuss the ESER piece, but I think the biggest lesson coming from that is, in the post-ESER world, from an educational standpoint, the things we've implemented need to stay, and we'll be talking about the gains that we've had next week at this time.
But we can get that document, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
Brett?
I just want to clarify, what you're asking for, Don, is you start off with 2.3 million, and then you have every line exactly what was spent and how much, write down, whether it be a Chromebook, an extension cord, et cetera. So complete account of how the money was spent, not only on human resources, but on...
Right, because as a grant to the district, this school committee is responsible for accepting that and approving the grants that we receive.
Right, and you did approve, I mean, the grant was approved by this district and by you. What I'm saying is, is that we had a breach that we're all aware of, that I am not sure to the level at this point in time of the specificity of what you just claimed. We will do our best, as we always have, and it seems like every time we have a school committee meeting, we then spend the next week getting ready for the next school committee meeting, which is fine. But what I'm saying is, we will give you exactly what we have at that time, and we will present what the ESER grant, especially ESER 3, is doing in order to help kids learn.
Anything else on budget before we go to E and D for FY '22 and E and D?
E and D, go, John.
This is E and D. So I, on February 17th, I submitted the balance sheet, the district's FY '22 balance sheet, to the Department of Revenue for certification. They have, I put this on the agenda because I was hoping that they may have acted on it and certified it by now. They have not, so I will have to postpone this, and I don't want to talk about the FY '22 budget, I'm sorry, the FY '22 E and D until the Department of Revenue certifies it properly. They're the ones who call the shots on all of that.
So we're going to try to give the person at the OR a little nudge, but he's the only one that does it, right? Kind of sort of, and you've known him for, he's been done it for a while. So we just want to see, we were hoping it was going to be ready today. I really tried to get it for next week because we need to know what E and D is moving forward.
Within the hour of certifying it, you'll be, have another blizzard of documents on your drive. Now that I understand Google and catching on, you'll get all the documents that I have ready to go, but I don't want to present it publicly until the Department of Revenue officially certifies it.
Careful, it's March. I don't want, I don't know if we want to use the blizzard where our...
Thanks, John. Okay. Okay, strategic plan, George, just want to give an update. We've met today as a group, notes to follow.
So today was our second official strategic group plan meeting. All 24 people were at the meeting. Again, I want to remind the folks that Dr. Kurt Bates is running it through Seaside Consultants for us. The 24 members are representative of school employees, administrators, students, teachers, parents, and groups that they represent, such as CPAC, such as our Family Community Liaison for ELs. And today, we talked about, in the notes you have, we already had the buckets and the six big focus areas. Six big focus areas, if I can just remind you, are communication, curriculum, community and culture, student, staff, and resources. So what we sort of did today was, we had sent home a bunch of, well, grades three to 12, we did student surveys. Those student surveys centered around belonging, centered around some of their thoughts, centered around some of their academic feelings, and they're all age appropriate. And then we so far have, we still have our parent survey out. Our parent survey closes next week. As of today, there are 689 people who've responded to that, so that's pretty good. But what we did today was, we matched what we had done with our themes, we matched what we had pulled out of the SWOT exercise that everyone did, and then we looked at what do our student surveys say? And do our students feel what we feel in order to move forward? So all of that data was culminated, was collected today, and then it will be presented by the next time we meet. What you'll see in your drive tomorrow is the specifics of what took place today in the form of the notes. But I will say that there's a boy who's probably a junior maki, he's one of our student reps, and that kid is sharp. And so basically, what he, what we talked about today was, if everything centers around a student, then the next layer is the community and the culture. And then everything else should be, what we're striving for is to make sure that the student gets what they need within a community and culture that supports it, and those ancillary pieces would be things like resources, human, fiscal, physical, would be things like the staff itself, would be things like the curriculum that supports it. So as we're moving forward in this big macro look, we're starting to come up with these themes and this vision of where we want to go and what we need to do for the next five years. Now, if you'll remember, a strategic plan is at a top layer, it's at a top macro level, and it ends with the micro level of the action steps, which are year one, how are you going to get there? Year two, how are you going to get there? So right now, we're at the phase of, we're sort of forming our middle stage. We know the big categories, we know the big things that we want to work on, and then the next time we meet is, how do we really implement those things we want to work on under the big category as we move forward? So it was great, everybody seems to be into it. You have small group work, you come back together, a lot of chart paper, a lot of stickies, a lot of things like that. Nikki brings snacks, so it's pretty good. And, but we did about three and a half hours today. But in your, in your notes, you'll have your notes there tomorrow, and then if there's questions that arise from that or things we can answer more, by all means, we'll try to do that. But we should have some diagrams, and we should have some like physical things to look at shortly as the plan is coming together.
Chris?
George, can you repeat when the parent survey closes?
Parent survey closes next?
No, Friday, this Friday.
This Friday.
Thank you, so this Friday.
This Friday. At 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question for anyone? So parents are supposed to fill it out per each student that you have in the district, correct?
Correct, yeah. So the directions are at the top, and then we'd ask that if you have three students, we'd ask that you fill it out. So it asks for the name, and it asks for where they go, so that we can go from there.
How was it given to the parents?
It was sent in, it was sent in a link in an email, and then there's something coming out, I believe, today, from tomorrow, from Jeff, that gives it to them again, so that they can just click that link and be taken right to it.
All right. My wife's horrible at emails.
And that student, I just want to say, George Offerman-Job today.
Perfect. I figured, I figured we could get a waiver or something, you know? So, he's a sharp young man. Both students are very good, Elena's very good also. She's our freshman representative.
Chris, you got something else?
I just, Karen, what grade?
He's a junior, and then Elena is a freshman. Yeah, so we figured sophomores and seniors are sort of covered already because they're doing different spots, but we wanted to get the freshmen and the juniors.
Great.
Anything else?
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
So going back a little bit to old business, transportation and school start times, so I want to talk a little bit about the start times and then build transportation into that because one, one works off the other. When I presented the start times last week and the transportation data, I was unaware, and just became aware today, that when I built the start times around, when I built the presentation around the start times or proposed start times or the changes, the transportation department kind of built the non-mandated busing around the scenarios that I had put together. So all three scenarios had added the additional buses and aligned the elementary schools. So if we choose as a school committee not to align those three elementary schools, I have to go back to the financials about non-mandated busing. So Karen had put together something that I...
I'm sorry, can you?
Sure.
I'm following you.
So...
I'm the only one, but...
No, that's okay. So last week, when I presented the three start times, scenario one, two, and three, all three elementary schools were aligned to a certain time, which added about $214,000 to the budget, and I recommended using E and D, okay? Doesn't affect the times of days, but it was the alignment of the schools. So when I asked Karen in transportation to come up, how do we bus all our students in the under a mile and a half, .7, she used that scenario that she had built around aligning the three schools. So the data that you have might not be as accurate if the committee chooses not to align the three elementaries or make no changes to this year's student schedule as presented. So if we stay at 7:05, 7:40, and the three elementaries are different, that will change my recommendation on what we do for non-mandated busing if we shift from under a mile and a half for middle school or under .75 for elementary school. Yes?
Will we see this broken out at some point so we can follow along the mountain ball here? Because I'm not really, this is processing with me.
Okay. So George, if you want to just open up the laptop up there, I put the start time transportation up, just on the start times.
Yeah, no, I get the gist of what you're saying, that you based it on having all the elementary schools combined.
Yes.
You recommended using E and D to offset the cost of that.
Correct.
So I'm just, from that point, what are you saying now?
I don't want you to look at the financials for transportation.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Fair enough.
Because she built those on something that if this committee decides not to do, they're wrong.
So I thought you were looking for some feedback from us on your proposal based...
But I am at this point, too, because these are the, nope, that's the wrong slide, if you can go up.
But is that accurate, where it says no additional cost to the district?
Nope, because that's the wrong slide. That's the correct slide. So those are the three proposals that I put together as far as the goals of aligning the elementary schools, making a recommendation of changing the times of day for students, and adding a half hour or more instructional, or more additional time to the elementary day. Those were the three goals that I had when I put together. These are the three options here, okay? And really, for the committee, what I'd like to find out is, what say you on some of these pieces? We've got tremendous feedback from parents, and I think it's great, and I'm going to send out another email tomorrow. George mentioned the survey, that's going to be attached. With these three scenarios, broken down to identify exactly what the changes are, because I think sometimes folks just look at, they say, well, the high school starts at 7:20, or the middle school, they will change. People haven't necessarily looked at that in depth. If we change that, so I'm going to send out an email again with a little bit more detailed explanation for parents tomorrow. And again, I'm not looking for a vote from the school committee, but I am kind of looking for some guidance from this committee, because there were three asks. The ask was to look at if we can adjust the start time to give school-aged children or adolescents more time at home or more time in bed. The other ask was to align the schools, the three elementary schools, so we could do some PD with our, with our elementaries. And the other ask was, once we found out in October that our fifth graders at Hanson Middle spend more time in school, to add time to the school day. The feedback from parents to the committee, and I keep asking parents to send you that feedback, I'm on that as well, is to, I've got, we've seen, why are you adding time to the school day? It's a long day. What are you going to do? I responded to a couple of those, saying, it's really going to be used for more social emotional development and instruction, but it's not going to be the 30 minutes or 25 more minutes of instruction. We've gotten both sides of the coin of, I think high school students should come in later, I think middle school students should come in later, or don't change the schedule at all. And the alignment, and I've also heard, let's, this is, this is a financial decision, so if we don't do that, where are we? So I need some guidance from the committee before I make any recommendations on transportation, because that was another avenue of putting guidelines in place, and it was really around non-mandated busing and the inequities between Hanson and Whitman. But it revolves around some changes here. If we're adding three buses to align the elementary schools, I believe the data that I have, that I presented last week is pretty accurate. But when we spoke to Karen today, she said, but if you don't do that, the data that I presented around that doesn't include those three buses or those tiers. So if we're going to add middle school students and elementary school students that we recommended, or I recommended last week, that were under that walk zone or that non-mandated piece that we, that is governed by the two towns, those numbers might change. To top that off, at our RAC meeting the other day, and even at school committee last, last time, there was a thought process, if we add more students to the buses, it will change our reimbursement from the state. We're looking at that as well. But there are so many variables to this, I need some guidance from the committee to what you feel strong about. If we feel strong about what we want, that additional time for the elementary day, great, I can, I can give you a scenario with that. If we want to align the three elementary schools, I know that it's going to cost this. If we want additional time or later start time at either the high school or the middle school, without aligning these schools here, I know Duval's going to go later. And that's one of the other slides I presented last week. So I know we talked a little bit last week at the committee, but there was no, there was no decision, and I don't need a decision, but I need to know the feel of the committee so I can properly present information to you folks financially and where we're at. And I know we've got tremendous feedback from parents, and I know some parents have spoken about it, so.
Glenn?
What is the benefit of even just the purpose of aligning the three schools?
So...
Just to do it?
Any, any type of professional development we have right now, so we have a PD day on March 10th, I have to, my elementaries all dismiss at a certain time, so it has to start, and again, with my high school being so early, if we, you know, we have to stagger it, but I can't get my three elementaries together. If grade one wants to meet together at some times, they can never do that outside of the school day.
All of grade ones?
Great, all of grade ones.
How often does something like that happen?
If we wanted to do a PD day like that?
What's a PD day?
A professional development day.
So if I could, there's five day, there's five half-days built in for professional development in the district calendar. So what happens is, is that if we need to bring them together, the elementary schools, let's say all grade one from Conley, Duval, and Indian Head, you're only looking at about an hour and 40 minutes where they can be together in that afternoon, because Conley might get out at 11:20, Indian Head might get out at 11:40, and Du...
Who might get together?
So the first grade teachers.
So this is about teachers, not students?
Not students.
This is about teachers. Ancillary, it is about, it is about, yeah, it is about students also in the sense that if you are at the Duval school and you have a 4:30 practice, like we talked about at the meeting before, that's difficult. If you're at the Conley school, it might not be, because your day changes and your sleep cycle changes, I know you're all talking about that, and then the, your, how you go to school changes. So it is. So in a school district, we would like to have our elementary schools aligned, because it does make for better use of school time for staff, and then it does make for better use of school time for students. Because if you all get out at the same time, and you all play on a Whitman team, and that team is at 4 o'clock, and now you all get out at 3:10, that does give everyone on that team also a balance of what they have to do, be it sports, be it gymnastics, be it singing, be it what have you. But that is, that is one of the things that we're trying to do, is align that from a school district perspective.
You got to follow up, Brett?
Yeah, yeah. Other towns, what do they do?
Pretty similar.
Pretty much everybody's aligned?
Pretty much everybody's aligned. Yes. I mean, our, well...
It just seems a lot of, for five days, to make this big giant change for five days.
In the research that I did, most schools have like, so they'll have their elementary schools, like in Marshfield, they rotate, they don't all start at the same time, but they alternate, so every two years or every three years, they alternate. So like, you might be the early school for these three years, you might be the late school. In Hingham, they have four elementary schools, two go at the same time, the other two go at the same time. I didn't find any, I understand the practicality of getting teachers together, I think that that makes sense. I think for me, the holdup is the extra 30 minutes. I don't understand where that's coming from, because we're not, according to my math, we're, the elementary schools are all at the 900 hours is what they need for elementary schools, and secondary schools need 990. So I don't know why we're adding...
We're meeting on minutes.
Absolutely, so...
The issue came up with this committee, because it was brought up at this committee from an equity standpoint, that students at the fifth grade level in one town, Hanson, go to school longer than the fifth grade students at Duval and Conley. We haven't looked at the academic gains or anything like that.
So in education, right, and you just talked about how next week, we're going to talk about kids, and we're going to look at this. So in education, everything is data-driven, right? Teachers make goals, you're making goals, they're smart, they're measurable, right? We looked at minutes and said, this isn't equal, but we haven't actually looked at the product to determine what's happening, and there's no data to drive this decision. And are our fifth graders in Hanson, are they categorized as being at a secondary school because they're at a middle school?
Yes.
So then they don't have to meet, they need to meet 990 hours, not 900.
We just, yeah, we submit it in because they're considered a middle school.
Right.
They meet 990.
So it's, so it, so, so the conversation shouldn't be fifth grade, fifth grade, fifth grade, it should be elementary school, elementary school, elementary school, middle school, middle school.
Sure, right, but folks, I can't disagree with any, I mean, I can't not agree, I'm trying to agree with you. I'm trying to agree with you, but what I'm saying is, is that from the discussions from this committee...
Not me. And what I'm saying is, that 30 minutes is a really long time for a kindergartner who may have been half-day preschool for three days a week to ask them to go, right? And I don't, I don't know that it's in the best interest of the kids, and I would just like more answers as to why. like more answers as to why. I think that we owe the kids and the families that. I think that academic stamina, those of us who've been in a classroom, like, it takes time to develop academic stamina, and adding an extra 30 minutes all at once, like, when I, in Pembroke, we added 25, 30 minutes to our day, and we did it over three years. We didn't do it all at once, because of the academic stamina to last. So I'm not in favor of, I understand we have to align the schools, but to throw 30 minutes on and not have data to support, or things like that, seems irresponsible and lazy, honestly.
Chris?
Can I yield my turn to Glenn, because mine's a slightly different subject, and I think it's...
Yeah, but I'm also going to say, I'd like to give everyone an opportunity before we go around. So if you want to go, go now, and...
Well, I was just going to talk about this, these start times, in a general kind of look. Last school committee meeting, we had a gentleman here that was speaking during public comment that said a lot of things I didn't agree with, but one of the things he did say that I did agree with, or I thought was interesting, was the idea of having a staggered approach to this, right? And a plan over time to get to where we want to be. It seems like that might be a more palatable option for a number of towns, you know, when we're looking at the budget. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up, and I would maybe ask the administration if they could present something along those lines.
So I appreciate that, because I was going to bring that up as well. Again, we, a lot of conversation around start times, from last summer to the issue around Columbia State Weekend, around the half-hour. We're not using data, we're just using strict minutes. And it was the ask of that, and then looking at the research around adolescents and their sleep patterns. So there's a lot here, and nothing has to be approved. We actually have a schedule, so you're not under the gun anywhere to change anything either. And I wanted to bring that up. We can still continue to work at it, and I appreciated that comment to say, if you're going to make a modification, do it slowly and look over five years at how you can get your ultimate goal. So I appreciate that, Chris.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so I, yeah, it's, I think, for all parties involved, really, a staggered approach might be a better way to approach this, you know? If you're talking equity, if you're talking, you know, just concerns of some parents with, you know, the, you know, shock of the change, and, you know, whatever it is, it seems like it might be, it's definitely, in my opinion, worth looking into, and I'd like to see something.
Sure. One of the, one of the pieces last night, we're talking about the extended time, I happened to see the former president of Mass, Tim Pinwar, from Bill Ricker, and this was a conversation last night that was voted down by the committee. He was trying to add additional 30 minutes to the middle, middle and elementary time. We make our 990, in our elementaries, middle and high, 990 at middle, and 990 at high school, and 900 for elementary. We're right on par with what the state asks us to do. This was an additional ask, because of something that changed in 2018. So I don't want to jam around peg in a square hole, I want to do it right, but there was an ask to put something together for the committee, and was there a financial impact of it? And again, addressing three of the issues. We've been talking since 2012 about the alignment of the elementaries. It would be beneficial for us, especially professionally for our teachers, to get them aligned. Does it have to be in one year? No, not necessarily, but we can come up with a plan. But again, around the fiscal piece of this, this is what we, kind of what we're charged to do, along with trying to understand the inequities of our transportation document as well. So I wanted to take the start time piece first, because that's a financial piece that will drive the transportation piece. If we, if it's not decided that we actually add these three buses and those tiers to do that.
But it also, if you do, okay, on second thought, though, I mean, I guess I'm jumping in, I'm sorry, Chris, I should ask.
Go ahead. You and Jeff are kind of like, you can just keep going together.
If you want to change the start time at the high school, let's just say it's the 15-minute time for the sake of an example, and you don't align the elementaries, then you're basically saying that the Duval school's going to get out later, even later. So there is that piece, if, where start time and alignment actually melds, because if not, you won't be able to, you'll just pick, you'll move everything back 15 minutes. So is there a piece that says that should be looked at by the committee?
So, so Keith, can you just hit the next slide? Because I put that one together, and that's not adding the six hours either. That's what you would be looking at, if you added the high school, just, middle school or high school are interchangeable, and you just stayed with your six-hour a day, and you bumped that up. That's what we're looking at for next year. So, I mean, just to jump on that, that's what we would be looking at, that's no, no cost to the budget, that's adding 20, 15 minutes to the, to the high school, or middle school, again, interchangeable, but that's how it would affect the rest of the schools, trickling down.
So it'd be one or the other? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, that's an option, you know, that's there. But I'm releasing Duval again, we're looking at a 3:30 dismissal.
I want to get, I want to get some other folks, just, if it's quick.
Oh, I'm not, whatever.
Yeah, well, I know Don's waiting and...
I'm just trying to stand.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have some comments, but since you just mentioned this slide, I'm confused, why would this...
Hang on, Don, we'll see if we can get rid of the serenade.
Yes.
Thank you. Good enough. We'll give her a few minutes, enough. We should have stuck with, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just trying to digest these times, so the one on the right would be maintaining elementary schools at six-hour days, but you've moved middle school to 8:00 AM, and Conley to 9:00? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that.
The times in the morning are less, as Karen put it, you have to look at dismissal times, because the high school and middle are six-and-a-half-hour days, and the elementaries are six-hour days, that, even that 2:30 dismissal to the middle, from the middle, to get those buses there are going to be challenging, especially at Duval, at Conley.
But you could, in essence, add the half-hour on in the morning for Conley, it would become 8:30 to 3:00 PM.
If we're adding six-and-a-half, correct.
Right, at six-and-a-half, that half-hour in the morning.
And, and, we get next slide, if you could...
Fred, did I, did I think?
Yeah, just, I got Don, Fred, and then I'll come to you.
And I think I did that there, Don. So that's, that's what we could do, if we added the half-hour in.
Okay.
Okay? That's what, that's what I can do, because of the difference. They moved the earlier times for Conley, but Duval is now out at 3:45.
Yeah, and I like Hillary's example of other towns, I didn't realize they alternate after two to three years and alternate, because, yeah, it's...
That would be something that we would have to impact bargain with the association.
Fair enough.
Yep, so we could do it. There's a lot of things we can do, and I just wanted to get information from the committee as well.
I was supposed to go after Chris.
I still have the floor, if I may.
Yeah, you're on, you're on round two. I want to give everyone a chance before we start going round two, and we got people waiting to public comment too, so.
So I really need to speak to the inequity, again, of the fifth grade situation here. It's, it's not simply an elementary versus a middle school. I firmly believe that there could, you couldn't have two, a fourth grade in a building and have half the classrooms get out a half-hour early and the others get to stay. It just, I'm sorry, it's absolutely, frankly, illegal, I think, right now, what we're doing by offering two different experiences in one school district, regardless of whether it's one school building to the other. And I will say that, yes, we're doing the 900 hours, and as it was mentioned, we're on par with the state, you said. But that sounds to me like we're doing the bare minimum, right? We're just meeting that. There are other elementary schools offering more hours of education, so right now, that tells us, tells me we're doing the bare minimum, right? We're doing the bare minimum, but yet, when we look at another funding decision we've made in regards to transportation, and the recommendation from the superintendent is to bus everyone, and that's to go above and beyond, that's a luxury in the South Shore to provide a bus to every student. Bridgewater Random School District does not bus students less than two miles that live within that range, because they spend the funds on academics. So we're telling people right now, we're, you know, this time on learning, the bare minimum's fine, and yet, we're willing to spend money to bus all students to come to a building to do the bare minimum. I think the funds can be better spent. It's probably an unpopular opinion right now, but I don't think we can afford to spend money on buses to people who live within a half-mile or a mile, who are more than likely driving their kids, because we've heard about the conversations about the traffic jams already happening at the schools, because they're probably already driving them. And yet, here we are talking about putting money into a bus seat for them. It bothers me, as Jeff just mentioned, we should talk about academics more. We should talk about giving all students the same academic access. In regards to the transportation budget in this report, I still don't see an outline of what supports this document that I had asked for at the last meeting, which is Document 18. It's the mileage, it's the transportation line, it's 1,796,556. I'm not sure if we go back to the other slide, that this number is supposed to match up with what's proposed on those times in that slide, but again, what exactly are we providing for that 1,796,556? But I think, Chris, remember Scriven, you're right, this is a lot to digest, it's three different situations. It's more than just adolescents getting more time in bed in the morning, the science is behind all of that, that their REM sleep in the morning is most beneficial to their health. It's their health that we're talking about, for that later start time for both middle school and high school. And I don't know how we accomplish it, I don't want to move middle schools earlier, I want to move high schools later. Somehow, we've got to come to some situation. But if, if we don't fix the elementary's six-hour to six-and-a-half-hour, then I don't know, it's a problem to be solved, so we need to find another solution for that.
Okay, thank you. I had Fred, and then Bass, and then we can, if everyone's done, we can go round two.
I wanted to say that I don't think we can make any decision without having all of the information, and it sounds like it's a Herculean task to compile all the different scenarios, et cetera. I know myself, I'd want to see everything in every, you know, different scenario before being able to make a decision. And, you know, we've got a community, you know, seems like the elementary doesn't want to change. Middle school's a toss-up toward, I don't want to change. High school, yeah, we got to be later. Now, I don't know how you become Solomon and satisfy everybody at the same time, but without having all the information so that we can make an informed decision, I just don't think we can. That's my little piece, and also, on your legislative update for your HD 212, I found that very interesting. I don't know if you want to...
Nope, not yet.
Yeah, save it for later. One at a time. Bass, thank you for waiting patiently.
Oh, that's okay. So, I understand what everybody's saying, and just a comment about the switching of the schools. Originally, you, Duval and Conley were supposed to be switching every couple of years, but for some reason, they didn't, they stopped going, and decided to do that. But I should really point those, align the three elementary schools if you're going to change start times, because Duval would be getting out much too late, and I think those ten, like everybody's saying, more information, I think those two really have to align. If you're going to have, change the start times, then you really need to look at the three elementary being at the same time, so they're not getting out so late for those little, to be, you know, on the bus. So, and I'll end it there, because I'm not getting them to talk in.
Anyone that hasn't spoken before we go to round two. Real quick, I think the one point I want to add very quickly, is I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we cannot lose the elongated bus ride times in this conversation, because there is definitely an opportunity, potentially, right, to splitting Solomon's baby, or how are we doing it? Right? Like, if, if we go to that next slide, right, if we were to back up the high school by the 15 minutes, potentially, you know, the middle schools might back up 15 minutes, but if their bus ride cuts by 15 minutes, they're going to literally get home at the same time. So, like, I don't want to lose sight of trying to get those ride times down.
But it also, you also have to understand that it, it may or may not, you know, it may or may not solve that bus problem, because you're still playing with the 75% capacity, because we're a regional school district. That goes back to like, Don, I think maybe two months ago, we kind of talked about that. So, that, that maybe gets helped if you then look at the amount of putting all kids on buses, because the state then says, if you bus all kids, we add kids. Yes, there's an added cost, but you also increase the 75% percentage by adding those walkers, so now you might be at like 83%, where if you then can manipulate your bus routes, you then might be able to free up that bus route for an extra one or two to solve that 40-minute bus ride. So they're separate, but they're linked. And I'm sorry, but it's confusing. Yeah, yeah.
So, exactly, and I think that's the information we don't have. So we can certainly give you guidance, but we don't have the data. And we can't plan the bus routes, right? We could.
Right, but, but, okay.
But I think, but my point is, like, I think...
Nobody wants us to...
Right. But I think, but I think this is the conversation that's hopefully helpful, right? Because again, if you were able to figure out a way to satisfy some of that, and if that does mean, maybe you do have to make a recommendation to bus everyone, and there's a cost here, but there's a benefit here, then I think that's what we have to be open to. But to Fred's point, it's hard, because we're kind of, we're limited.
But I would say, I would say, in my position, it's also very difficult to leave here without a motion or a plan of action from this committee, and then say, so what are we supposed to do? How many, how many do we want? How many scenarios? How many people are we satisfying? Are we making sure the 9 o'clock? Are we making sure the 7:20? Because there is also work that has to be done for the normal delivery of school and education that happens during the week. So, I mean, listen, at the end of the day, Jeff tells us to do something, we have to do it. But I think we, we need something to, some frame of reference, one or two things, so we can at least have a plan to come back with that.
And, and, just because, again, it's by minute, right? I think my response to that is, as educators and leaders, we can give you feedback, but we're going to look for you to give us the recommendation. So you can give us 52 scenarios, and we can pick one, or ultimately, the responsibility and the charge that you have and the administration have is to take all that information and say, we've heard everything, and this is the best we can do, and this is what it looks like. Right? You can give us 32 scenarios, and we can keep voting on them, but that's not, I don't have the data. I don't have the information, it's not my job.
Sure, you're right.
So, that's, if that helps, that helps. But, uh, hold on, I got, I actually got Glenn, and then Chris, and then Fred, if we're going round two, because you were waiting very...
Yeah, I don't need that much to say, no. It's just, we all got those emails, and this just seems like, no matter what we're going to do here, there's, people aren't going to be happy with this, with the solution. So, that's Fred, so we need as much, is there a transportation consulting firm that we could talk, like, this seems overwhelming, because no matter what, someone's going to be upset.
So this is, this is the charge. I have one person who runs transportation, who actually has a full-time job running transportation, and now we're doing scenarios with estimates for next year, because this is for next year's student body, that we don't know yet. Well, we do know, and those are the, the financial pieces that we know. But again, running the scenarios to the best that we can, if we can look at, okay, we can do the less half-hour, that's what we tried to put together, but if we can put together more data, but if it's going to be a consultant or somebody else that we're going to bring in, this isn't going to be this year.
Okay.
And again, this is the, if you want, we can push it off as well. This year's been a really, I'll just, this year's been a real tough year.
Satisfied if we do that.
Because there's been a lot of stuff we've had to make up, not make up, make up, but redo, because it's been gone. So when Karen's pulling the data, she doesn't have the data, she's pulling it in from different areas. So that's been, trying to put together something that meets the conversation of the summer, we had this conversation before the breach, and then kind of went into it, and then found out an additional data point of middle, fifth grade, adding that to that. So if the committee's okay with, this isn't a budgetary consideration for 2024, okay, but if it's, if it's under the gun for when we set the assessment on the 15th of March, it's going to be daunting task, and I don't know if I'm going to have everything that is being asked. So we put together this over time, and then, like I said today, talked to John a little bit, and the, and the transportation scenario is based upon some of the recommendations that we put together in these three scenarios. And again, it's, it's one person running simulations through our Versitran system.
Okay. Chris, and then Fred.
Yeah, so, I, I don't remember the last time we had such a large amount of public comment on an issue. I don't know, I can't recall one.
I do.
Huh?
I do, but I'm... Yeah, that was it.
Well, I'm not so sure about that.
650 emails, that was a lot.
Yeah, okay. But my point is, it's, it's worth our time, it's worth looking at.
I agree.
And I, my comments earlier, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get to the point where I'm not trying to satisfy everybody at once. It's saying, let's look at the issue, let's look at the science behind it, let's try to figure out what we'd eventually like to have happen, and let's chart a course to get there. And that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen all this year and all at the same time. No, it's, but let's, let's make a plan. That's all I'm saying.
So, can I just, what I'd like to see, I'd like to see our high school start time later, but not to the, at the expense of my middle school.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'd like to lessen my transportation ride time, and I'd also like to give data on the fact of adding time to that fifth grade. And I know I also have a building project that will satisfy that in a couple of years as well. I don't want to push that out, but I'd like to look at the data. And I haven't had that opportunity necessarily, because of the, again, we have a transportation issue of an inequity of a guideline that we're trying to fix as well. So, if I can process and take more time, it's okay. And we are in a crunch around dollars and cents.
My only concern about that is, and in Whitman, we've heard the term kicking the can down the road so many times over the past, however many years, I don't want to just kick this down the road. I want to get to the point, we have a plan, and then we can say, yeah, we're going to implement it over time.
Fred, then I'd really like to get some public comment.
No, no worries. I'll be quick. Two things. Number one, I'd rather, no matter what, that we get it right. If it meant, if it means not rushing and making sure that we get it right, getting it right. That being said, George, you asked for one little tidbit or something, some sort of direction. Can we sit here today as a committee and agree on one little piece that's up there? Is it the fact that it's too late to let elementary kids go home at 3:35 in the afternoon? That, you know, 3:20 at Duval right now is late enough?
Yes.
Okay, so, is there, and then maybe you guys can work backwards from that with different scenarios.
Give me an end time, the latest end time, and we work backwards.
Yeah, you know, so, does that make sense to anybody? I'm just throwing that out there. You can always start in the beginning, but now you have so many different schools that you're considering. If you just take the one end time, boom.
So, I think we can certainly try and give some more guidance. But, again, anytime we have people waiting patiently, I'd like to give them an opportunity to share it too, before we get to that point. So, come on down.
Hi, it's Alou, Hanson, Bridge by Thrive. So, I have a lot of concerns about adding 30 minutes to the elementary school day. Specifically, where Indian Head is, they have kids on the bus for 50 minutes. So, adding time to that just doesn't make sense until you fix that issue first. Town is not that big that a child needs to be on the bus for 50 minutes, especially when the kids that are on the bus for that long live right down the street from the school. It does not make sense. I also have concerns now that I'm hearing, you know, that we're meeting the 900 hours, minutes, whatever. So, we're meeting what we're supposed to be meeting in that school, right? And there's all these issues of when are the teachers going to meet? When is Mrs. McGann going to meet with the other fifth-grade teachers? And why is nobody thinking about that? So, there's a lot of things to consider. It's not just this fifth-grade class in Whitman doesn't have enough hours, right? Because this has been happening for five years. Just because somebody just noticed doesn't mean it needs to be fixed today, because it's going to affect every other student in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Oh, yeah, let me get quick. Thank you, Kevin Kafka, WHA, Tri-Do anyways. So, just a couple of clarification points. So, obviously, as Jeff had mentioned, there's some subjects of bargaining here that we would have to look at going through. And, again, if you look at kind of the, you know, seven-hour day, there's flexibility as far as the time manipulation of it. If you're looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, but putting an additional 30 minutes onto it, right, so not only, again, there's the bargaining aspect of it, but there's also an additional cost, right, the extension of the day, and also the kind of the extension of the contractual relationship that we have. If we're looking at changing something at the high school first, what would be the timeline for that? Are we talking about, like, rolling out in September or for the start of the year? Certainly, there would be some concerns about, you know, scheduling, you know, staff, you know, childcare responsibilities and things that would be put in place. So, I had a question in regards to the timing piece of it, too.
So, again, as I said, if anything was decided this year for the committee, it would have to, as I mentioned last week, it'd have to be bargained anyway. And as far as the contractual time, teachers are contracted for the seven hours. We have that built in to this. So, it's a matter of time there. But, again, it's a conversation with the association of the change.
I just want to make sure, and maybe I misinterpreted, but kind of that additional, like, 30 minutes, right? So, I think there's the thought that we're adding 30 minutes to the day already, not necessarily looking after time on learning, right? I just want to make sure that that's a...
The teacher's contracted day is still seven hours. Correct.
Yes, Cindy McGann. So, I want, I just want to clarify that, because there's a misconception out there, that when you're adding time to the teacher's day. So, that has, again, has to be bargained. You're going to have to pay for extended staff time. Are we extending the time, or are we fine-tuning the time that they're in school already? I think that's what you need to look at. So, everybody's at seven hours. How do the elementary schools spend their time in the classroom versus the fifth-grade class at Hanson Middle School? How do they spend their time in the classroom within that timeframe? I think we are, you're getting way off the mark as far as bargaining and money and cost when you talk about adding a half an hour to staff time. I don't think that's, I think you need to clarify what you're deciding before you move forward with this. Are you adding a half an hour to staff time?
Cindy, we're not adding a half hour to staff time. You're at...
But that's what people think.
Oh, but yeah, we're not.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking that rhetorical question.
Correct.
So, the staff time for reporting would be 7:30, and my contracted end time would be 2:30.
Yes.
However, I...
Unless the time changes to 8 o'clock for you.
Correct, but which would have to be bargained.
Correct.
And then how I spend that time within that seven hours, as dictated to me by my school principal, is well within his rights to manage how I spend my instructional time. I think that's what you need to look at, not adding a half an hour to staff day. I think it's, you have to restate what the goal is for staff to make it clear, and so parents understand. Because I think it's very muddy, what's the debate that's happening right now.
Okay. Anyone else have public comment? So, now, I'm going to look to you and kind of, where do you, so where do you want us to go?
So, what I'm hearing is, you need more information, and this isn't going to happen in this fiscal year, or for this, within the next two weeks. That's what I'm hearing. I can just say, pretty much, there's no way I can get all these scenarios out with information to parents within the next two weeks. Asking about the various scenarios, I just don't see that happening. I can put together some scenarios with some bullets, if it's, you know, and I'm going to look to George a little, because we're going to be doing this together with the half hour. The bus route piece, I don't know if we can solve until we actually get an affirmative of where we're going, because it is a 75% capacity. We can get the data points, and George is going to speak next week, on how our students are doing in school, based upon our interim mid-year assessments. And that might help where our fifth grade is, to make that decision, whether or not you want to increase the time of the day for students in the elementaries. And then, again, what's the, what's the end date, or what's the end time? If it's 3:10 or 3:15 at Duval School, what my limitations are if we want to move the start times in the morning to those three schools. So, I think those are a lot of pieces there. But, again, if we're okay to say, this is going to be a process over time, it will give us some, a timeframe to say, okay, we're not going to kick the can, we're going to do it. But I don't know if I'm going to be able to get this information by March 15th, when we're still looking at the budget process.
You're also looking at a possible phased-in approach. That's the only one you didn't mention, right?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm seeing.
Color?
I just, I, someone who's experienced an extended school day, I think the phased-in approach, I think I still need clarification on what Mrs. McGann was saying, because I'm not sure I understand, and I'm not sure. So, like, can I just, so, right, so my kids go to Indian Head, and they can get dropped off at 8:50. But the day does not start until 9:05.
Correct, correct.
So, from 8:50 to 9:05, they're, I don't know what they're doing. They're getting breakfast, milling about, right, I...
They report to their, yeah, they report to their classroom.
So, the teachers...
So, the teacher's on duty at that time.
So, the teachers have responsibility for the students, but it's not direct instructional time from 8:50 to 9:05.
That is being counted as part of educational minutes. You are correct.
Okay.
Because the difference is, at a secondary level, kids are doing, kids are doing their own thing. Like, if you go to the high school or the middle school, the bell rings, you have eight minutes to get your stuff done and be sitting in homeroom when the homeroom bell goes off. So, that teacher is then watching the hallways. In an elementary school, that doesn't happen. You go to your class, you put your bookbag in, you do your mailbox thing, and you go from there. The teacher's already on duty. So, when you're talking about the restructuring of minutes within a seven-hour day, you're now talking about that time becoming more formalized at the elementary school. So that when you walk in, you have your work ready to go, right there, because that's going to count that time. So, you're basically reworking the structure, because the students are already in the care of the professional at that time. So, then you're really looking at, you're playing with about 12 minutes. You're really, at the end of it, are playing with about 12 minutes. So, where does that end up? And also, remember, there are more unstructured times at a middle school or a high school, because you account for so much passing time. So, you also have to figure out those pieces, too.
And I think that...
And this was, we talked about this months ago. I mean, we did.
Yes. And I think, I don't know how you would get that, right? Because I think seeing, like, what does the instructional day look like for a fifth grader? How much direct instructional minutes do they have versus lunch, because, you know, the 990 out, the 990 is not passing time, lunch, it doesn't count any of that. But in an elementary, recess, but in an elementary school, they don't have passing time. They don't have any of those minutes. So, like, where, it's just really complicated. And I think getting the data and then coming up with a phased-in approach, I think that looking at aligning the elementary schools, I don't, I don't know about adding time, but that's separate. I think aligning them for the purposes of getting our teachers on the same PD and being able to collaborate, particularly with all of the data that we are receiving from the assessments, is really valuable, and that is going to benefit our students. And I think Kate Delu made a really great point. We've got fifth-grade teachers at the middle school who run on a different schedule, who aren't able to collaborate with our other, other fifth-grade teachers. So, we, we can talk about all of the different ways, that there's not equity there, but let's look at how we can help the teachers instruct the kids first.
And Jeff did present an academic time at both levels about four months ago. So, we have talked about these different scenarios, and if you're asking, if you're saying, let's put our best foot forward as to what we think is educative, we can definitely, we can definitely do that. No problem.
Michelle, and then...
I guess Ms. Byers said something that's really resonating with me, so maybe someone can clarify. We had spoke, Hillary had spoke that our fifth graders in Hanson are considered middle schoolers, and Whitman, they are not. And then Ms. Byers said that she believed what we were doing was illegal. I'm hoping if there's somebody who can clarify, maybe even Ms. Byers, if in fact, what we're doing is illegal, because that's pretty, those are pretty strong words to me. If what we're doing is illegal by...
I don't believe so, but I can check. I mean, I think people are concerned about the equity and the like experience. But I can check. I think if that was a decision that was made in 2018, I would have hoped it was run by council, because, again, we, the committee made this decision back then.
Right, that's how I feel, like, I don't know if it would have been made if it was no...
And I wasn't in this chair at that point. I was sitting in the audience, watching it. But I can double-check that.
So, how about the takeaway is, you can work with whoever you need to, to check the legality of it. Because we can all debate that, but hopefully, we're not, that's not what we do.
I'll send the schedule, we'll talk to Andy, yeah, we'll consult council on that.
I had talked away, so...
Yeah, for you, Chair, I would respond. I don't know which chapter, section, or what, as far as legality, but I do know that a parent called Desi to ask about inequity in the district, and Desi's answer was, do you have a parent who's an attorney in the district? They may want to file a lawsuit. That's all I'm saying, is that, could we have ninth graders, like I just said about a half hour ago? Can you have a population here that comes in a half hour early, has access to the food early, or has access to adults? Just the environment, I don't know. You talk about data-driven decisions and helping our teachers to support students. I would ask you to respect the data also, that a 7:05 time is not healthy. The data shows that. We need to help those high school teachers be able to educate our high school students when the students are ready to learn, and they're not ready to learn at that time. So, I would follow up with a question, again, that if we can get a report that shows what transportation is included in that $1.7 million line item, as far as the bus routes and what that cost is, that would be helpful, just for that backup. But, yeah, I mean, if you, I don't want to make a motion for any changes in time right now, but it sounds like that's what will be needed at some point.
Chris?
Just, spot on to Jeff's comments, quote, you know, what our ask is, or whatever. I'm just, I'd just like to see a commitment to this going forward, a scheduled commitment to this going forward, if we're not going to do something, if I can be able to do something this, for this next fiscal year. I just want to be reassured that we're going to, you know, chart a course, so to speak.
I mean, we can do that. It's kind of like what we talked about this September, or, again, over the summer. This is what was presented. Now, multiple variables have come into that scenario. So, now we have to fix those. And I think I've heard from the committee, these are some of the things we have to try to fix. So, now we have to develop those scenarios, and there will be a commitment. I mean, it can be an ongoing goal. It can be even part of the strategic plan, as we go forward, in one of the buckets, as part of part, you know, looking at the social-emotional learning of all students. And that takes pre-K to 12, all the way up, and the start times and time on, you know, I don't want to say time on learning, because we're hitting the time on learning piece, but time spent in classroom with their teachers. And I think that's something, we've talked a little bit about the social-emotional aspect of it, and George and Cindy brought up the fact that the challenge that I have here is, not every student gets to Indian Head at 10:09. Some of them roll in at 5:00 after, you know, so it's not the same experience, because Indian Head opens up, and the teacher's in the classroom, and, okay, you know, my daughter goes in, and she's got a worksheet, but, you know, my buddy, or my daughter's buddy rolls in at 5:00 after 9:00, so it's not the same time. It's available, but not everybody's accessing it. So, I want to make sure that we hit the, we hit the goal to make sure that all students have that access to that at the same time.
Just one follow-up, if I could, Chris. I just want to keep in mind Ms. Otina's point about if we were to bus all the kids, how that might adversely affect...
Correct, and that's the other variable.
Please consider that.
Correct. And that's, that's the other transportation piece that we discussed in the regional agreement committee, and Mrs. Otina brought it up here. And there is some discussion, too, within the regional agreement, and how that's being billed out to the communities. So, that's another variable outside of this even, around the busing piece of it.
I just meant in terms of, in terms of a strategy, to try to accommodate everybody, or, you know, bus all the kids, and just consider the impact that that might have, that's all.
Just to piggyback on Chris's point, I think we need a plan. We started this conversation in the fall last year. Here we are today. We need a thoughtful plan. And if that thoughtful plan is, hey, maybe we need a third-party consultant, so be it. If that means we really need to think about how we engage all the stakeholders, so, like, we need a clearly articulated, defined plan. And I think, without the pressure of, like, well, we have to do it through this budget cycle, right? Because that, now, maybe that creates a really faulty plan, because, well, now we've got to cut this corner, we've got to do this, and we got, so, I think we just, as a committee, I don't know, personally, I'm not excited about options. I want you guys to say, these are the factors, this is what we thought about, this is what we considered, and this is what we think we should do and why we should do it. That's, because options don't help. I don't, it's not what I do, it's not what we do. But hopefully, you're getting all this feedback along the way, if possible, so.
I, yes, I would prefer a plan instead of a deadline, or, you know what I mean? I can have a deadline, an overall, but trying to fit it, fit it for March 15th has been challenging, because of the variables that have popped up. And, again, I didn't anticipate the fifth-grade issue when we were formulating this, and it's taken off in its own avenue. I understand the need for looking at the start time piece of it. I understand the busing aspect of it, and I understand the now piece of making a like experience for all, so.
Okay, we good to move on?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Okay. All right, where we going to make school choice enrollment discussion, I guess?
Yes, okay. So, school choice enrollment in your packet, I gave you two different documents, kind of show you where, who we have in district right now, and where, where our students are. So, there's two different pieces. Let me just remind the people in the gallery, or who's watching, school choice is voted out or not to accept students by the region, or by any school committee every year. It's assumed by the state that we accept school choice members... It's assumed by the state that we accept school choice members in. Students in district can choose to go anywhere that will accept them in the state of Massachusetts. Currently, we have 33 students that are out of district at school choice schools. But I did give you a list of students, or a list, there's two. There's a long list and there's a short list of where our students are at. And one of, you know, it starts with Archbishop Williams in Braintree. We don't pay for private schools. We don't pay for their academy or anything. But we do pay for public schools that are in there. So we have currently 33 students of choice out of district now. In our district here, which is important as we go forward, last year, the school committee voted to not accept school choice students. Currently, we have 45 students in district that are coming here that we were able to build their districts for their presence here. 17 of those students are seniors, 10 are juniors. I have nine sophomores and I have two freshmen. I have a few others in earlier grades. But I will say, those two freshmen were not accepted in school choice this year. They were matriculated in because prior to last spring, if a student was in district in seventh grade or eighth grade and they moved to another town they stayed. If we, and I'm not saying this, but as those school choice students move out, I'm losing, we are losing revenue in the district. So it's not a vote tonight, but I just wanted you to see the numbers. Currently, we have 45 in district that we're collecting revenue for. We have 35, 33 out. That is no option to us. We can't tell them not to go. But the committee, I'm recommending that we have a public hearing next week, March 8th or March 15th, it's up to you. We have to post public hearing for school choice. And then the committee can either vote to accept students or vote not to accept students. But this is what you have for numbers, so that you have a better understanding of who's here.
Chris McCray?
Yeah, I would agree that those are numbers, but you're not, I would doubt you take into consideration some of the adverse effects of school choice and how it's been, let's say, misused. I think, I believe strongly it's been misused over time, not for what it was meant for. So, yeah, I would caution against using just numbers to make our decision.
Fred?
Does Dr. Jones, or do you have a list of the number of teachers, the number of programs, and I guess indirectly the number of students that would be benefiting from us having those funds? In other words, what do those funds go toward? And what are we able to do? Are we able to, you know, just have another English teacher? Or is it that we're able to have an extra AP course?
So, so I think John has it, but I think there's six teachers that are, five teachers that are school choice currently, right now, in different departments.
It's document 24.
Yeah, document 24. So there's five teachers that are attached to that. So anytime you add a teacher to a department, you're adding, you're lowering class size or adding an additional section to whatever they're teaching.
And do we know, for example, what type of classes? You know, like, in other words, an AP class?
It could be, they could be teaching an AP. But if a teacher, say, it's an English teacher, if they're, if they're teaching five sections of something, whatever it is, it's lowering class size.
Yeah, the teacher, at the inception of this, the teachers were, we chose, we had one from every subject. So a science, social studies, math, an ELA, and then we had a specialized person assigned to it. So that's sort of, when this was developed, and I was only a principal then, when this was developed, that's, that is the realm of what we've done. So now, does that allow you to lower class size and build those groups? Yes. But can I say that the person specifically teaches AP only? No. But there's another person in that department as a result of school choice, which allows then more flexibility for electives and more flexibility for higher-level courses.
So theoretically, if you looked at it and said, "Okay, it's budgetary," you forget about the people for a second, and you just say, boom, we're chopping those five positions. What happens?
Higher class sizes.
Higher class sizes, less services?
Yeah, I mean, instead of, instead of 22 in a class or 19 in a class, it's going to, you're chopping off, a teacher teaches five sections of, say, let's just say 20, that's 100 students. The teacher leaves, those students go somewhere into another section, whether it be sophomores, juniors, whatever. So as this total, again, not, no decision, whatever, but as this total number goes away, there's, there's got to be an input, or we have to find the revenue somewhere. In 2012, this came in as a revenue source for the district. We didn't have as many students going out, because there weren't as many schools that were accepting. One positive about the, and I showed, gave you that list of where our kids are at or where our kids go for choice, we don't have any school choice kids in kindergarten this year, the first time. So our kindergarten outside of charter schools, and I can't prohibit charter schools. They're not choice, it's charter. But we don't have any kindergarten, any students this year out for kindergarten. So I think they all stay at home, which we will hopefully, the town that took from us before, not their own fault, their fault, but Rockland took from us. And they are our second biggest avenue of where our kids are at. Teca Academy, the online virtual school, is another big one. And again, I think the pandemic did a lot for that. Those students just went out. Prior to the pandemic, we had two or three students of choice in Teca. So again, I understand what Chris is saying, and I think this is a school committee choice. We talked at length last year about school choice. But I wanted to show you the numbers, because we're coming up on a vote. And I don't want you to get, you know, blindsided by, oh, Jeff, what's going on? We're going to vote today. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to look at that, ask me any questions over the next week or two, make a decision when we want to have the public hearing. Because we have to do this by May, and this doesn't necessarily impact the budget, but it will over time, once we start losing students.
Come on, I got Hillary, and then I want to get to them. Go ahead.
Last year, Policy Subcommittee, we spent a lot of time looking at data about school choice and how it affected our students. And I would just caution everybody, I totally understand that in 2012, when we opted into school choice and it was a thing, it was a new high school, and it was certainly a revenue source. One of our takeaways, or one of the things that we're trying to focus on, one of our working groups, has been climate and culture. And for every student that you bring in who has not grown up in the communities of Whitman and Hanson, they have the potential to take an opportunity from a student who has been embedded in this community since they were little. And it's, it's hard to, like, you were looking at this, and it's, here are the numbers, here's how many kids we have, here's how, here's what they're worth, right? We're turning these students into dollars, and we're not looking at our homegrown students and saying, you know, we might have an AP class, but if it's AP physics and we only have 30 seats, who's getting those 30 seats? And we are not in a position to necessarily open up a new AP course. I just think that school choice has the potential to take opportunity away from our students, students who are at the fields and on the courts and in Boy Scouts and at Dance Together. And that is a really good way to ruin climate and culture in a building. And I just think we need to think about that when we are making these decisions.
So having heard that, we're not debating school choice tonight, because we're going to have a hearing and then we're going to debate it. So are there questions that we can ask as a committee that would help inform us so that we can have that debate and stuff? Because, right, otherwise we might as well just vote it tonight, because we're going to literally hit the same thing twice. So if we can maybe do the, I'm sure we're going to do that. We're going to have a nice rousing debate and discussion over school choice. But if the committee wants, I mean, I'll do whatever the committee wants. But otherwise, we're going to, we're going to do it twice.
I just have a comment.
But, yeah.
Yeah, this speaks to a budget document in the packet, so it's not debate over-
Yeah, and I mean, we can do whatever the committee wants. I'm just planting the seed, like, I have a feeling we're going to debate it, but that's not going to be tonight, so.
No, and it's budget-related, because I appreciate these are students. So yes, I agree with everything you're saying that you just said about opportunities for. Following that, though, there will be a cost, because right now, this report shows we're receiving $262,000 in. And five teachers is actually $390,000. So we're not covering five teachers. We're short by $130,000. So are we prepared as a committee? Add $130, $30,000 to the budget to maintain that climate and culture? And going forward, add another $260,000 to the budget to cover that staff?
Chris?
Just a comment to Jeff. The way you just presented this, or what you actually said is, we're losing money. This committee had a lengthy discussion last year and came to a vote to not have school choice. So the way that was just presented, I feel like is a little incomplete, because there's a whole nother side to the story, other than the revenue we're losing. So, but that wasn't what you talked about when you presented it tonight. And I take issue with that, because there's more to the story than the numbers.
Understood. And just for clarification purposes, we do have to vote every year to opt out, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have, so just, just so everyone's, I think you know this, Chris, but just so everyone's clear, if we don't do it, then we're going to talk about it every year. I'm not saying it's not a pro or con, as to not, whether or not we should do it, but that's just the process. So I guess, just a really quick question, what do we get in a per-choice student?
It starts at $5,000. If the student's a special education, special education student, they can go up to $10,000 or $13,000.
So it's roughly $5,000.
Roughly $5,000, yeah, that hasn't changed. Correct, John, that hasn't changed?
Okay, now.
I thought that was the math.
Not if they're, that's the, that's the number.
Math for a Gen Ed student.
For a Gen Ed student. But if you're, if you're on an IEP, it goes up.
And what does it cost to educate? What's our per-people expenditure?
Off the top of my head, 14.9 right now. I don't know, I have to look back. We're better than we were, I just don't know.
But, but-
That's, that's why I'm asking the question. We can do the debate.
Right, okay.
We're on the same wavelength, that's why I'm asking that question, if that makes sense. Any other questions on school choice? And, okay, so when will the, other than tonight? Because we didn't post it.
No, I would prefer, I would prefer the 8th to open that up.
So next Wednesday?
To next Wednesday. So I could post it as a public hearing, you can just do a public hearing, and the committee can vote, make, vote it down, vote it up, whatever. But, and Chris, I'm sorry, I just have to present the numbers piece of it right now to the committee. We can go, it wasn't my opportunity to debate what was taken up last year. But I hear what you're saying.
Okay. I think we're on academic school calendar.
So academic calendar, this isn't up for vote either. But I wanted you to see a draft right now. Start of school, we're looking at, for teachers, August 28th, August 30th for students. What's up right now with a phone call into Hanson? Right now, I have Tuesday, November 7th off as an election day. I don't believe it's a general election. It might be a citywide or a local election. But if we don't have to have that day off, obviously we won't. Because in March, the presidential primary election is scheduled for Tuesday, March 5th. And I know we'll be using Hanson Middle School for that. And the end date, if we stick with August or November 7th being off, I'm looking at the last day of instruction is June 13th. Again, just for you folks to see.
And that's what the snow days are about.
With, with snow days, it's Friday the 21st. So it's up there. And this is just for you to review, look at it. I haven't added any school committee meetings, professional development conferences. It's just so folks out there can say, you know, we're really going to start on the 28th and look at June. What's up for grabs right now is that November 7th. So Jen put a call into Hanson, I believe. She said that there wasn't going to be an election, but I want to make sure. I talked to the clerk, make sure we have that.
The feet, the-
I don't want to have school if there's nothing, correct?
After this year, I don't think it would be why.
But that's why I flagged it there, because that's the election date, according to the calendar. But I don't know if we have an election in the state, and I don't think we do.
Yeah, I don't think we have an election in November.
There's nobody-
Congress every two, and that was just last-
That was just last year, right? So it might be non-issue. So I'll have a draft that I'd like you to vote next week or the week after, as a form.
Okay. Legislative update?
Legislative update, in your packet, a couple of things. So, we got the, the House bill that I'm going to defer to. But I also threw, threw a couple of different documents. And one's a cheat sheet document that the MAS, which is the Superintendent's Association, has been working on. It's just a reading item for you. All the educational legislative, and it's the last page, and it's, it's really, the top says, "First, we plan the work, now we work the plan." These are all bills that have been filed, according to my legislative committee. So you can review those, they're all pertaining to schools. Some would pertain to us, but not necessarily, you know, not all of them. The other piece is, I've been invited, and I invited our local reps to a breakfast next week. Strictly, and Rep. Sullivan hasn't got back to me, Rep. Culler is not going to be able to be there. But he is sending someone. It's really around the 14% increase of, in legislation. So I will be there, George will be there, and I can report out a little bit more on where the legislature is going. I don't want to speak now, because there's a couple of things that are being proposed as far as, I want to say, like, an insurance policy or an extension of what the, they, I want to call it like a pothole, or it's covering the expenses that the districts are facing. Tomorrow, I have a superintendent's meeting here, we get to host, and this 14% is on the agenda for our talking points. I had mentioned, and we looked at it, it's about a $650,000 increase if it's a set 14%. I will be able to report to you within the next two weeks what the legislative breakfast has come about and any information around that 14%. Outside of that, I know the House docket, and this wasn't on my list, but-
Yeah, I think Don had asked.
Don had asked for this, too.
Did you want to speak to that?
Do you want to speak to that at all?
Well, I can just confirm that, yeah, I had passed it along to Superintendent as the legislative rep, just to bring it to his attention, and that it was in line with the working group that you were part of-
Correct.
-in regards to, seems like a legislative working group, right? To review the same thing, the benefits of later start day for student learning.
And that's something we had talked about last year even, if, if there would be some legislation around guiding start times in the Commonwealth. And Desi had not had anything as far as their guidelines of start times when we spoke to the commissioner in the fall. But now the legislature is picking this up to see if they are going to look at that and maybe pass legislation on when students should come to school.
I just have a clarifying question. The last paragraph, July 1st, 2022, is that a typo?
Do you know if, I know there were, yeah, I was going to, I was, I was going to ask-
Because it sounds like they should have already come out with their report.
Did you issue the report, or you don't know?
They signed on, it's on, it's dated the 23rd, when everyone signed on to the bill. My gut, when I saw that, was that they just regurgitated from last year.
So then, July 2022 dated, so, okay. Well, hopefully, hopefully soon.
I think they're filing it again. They filed it last year, file again, right, to get sponsors and-
So when they file it again, that would have a future report data, when they would expect that, okay.
Yeah, and they'll probably have a different number, because to my knowledge, it hasn't been filed yet.
Okay.
No, it has, it says right on the document. Filed 1/11/2023, House Docket number 212.
Right.
Because if you go and go in and you look in the archives, it doesn't come up at all.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I did ask Kat about it, she's supposed to be getting back to me, so.
Well, hopefully, it would be nice if they do it.
It's just, it's something, right.
I, it'll be, I mean, it's a resolution to do the investigation.
Yeah.
I can't see them not doing that, because there's no budgetary impact.
Okay, Capitol warrants?
Do you just want to move to?
My favorite? Yeah, so I asked Jeff before, I don't think I need to read these verbatim, so you all have it in front of you, so I would entertain. Did we have to update this one at this one time?
Yeah, the new one that we received has the proper language. Whitman's not being opinions.
I would entertain a motion to accept the Capitol articles as presented in front of us.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Anything you want to call out?
Still, it, still has to go through the town, the think bombs, the Capitol committees, et cetera, but-
Right, just for those watching, this is what we do to get it to town meeting, so, or to the selectmen board, so that they can get it to town, so. Any note for the discussion, we'll lose the vote. So any note for the discussion, we'll move to vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Glenn votes yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Oh, all right, thank you.
And then, if I can just take, Dr. Jones had sent this to our Policy Subcommittee on modifying graduation caps and gowns, and his recommendation would be to go with an all-black gown and a red stole. We discussed this at Policy Subcommittee, they affirmed his recommendation, and I just need a vote of the committee to make that change.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On the recommendation letter, it does indicate, what's the wording? I'm sorry, but doesn't it say must be ordered by, yeah, it's, sorry, caps and gowns need to be ordered in February to ensure delivery in time for graduation. Approval is needed ASAP, and that was January eleventh.
So we fitted them, we haven't ordered them.
Okay. Are we still able to order all these in time for graduation even though it's March first today?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
I was hoping to get this on last week and we didn't, but he can't, we fit, the fitting was the important piece. They have them, so we're good.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
And then, if I can just take, Dr. Jones had sent this to our Policy Subcommittee on modifying graduation caps and gowns, and his recommendation would be to go with an all-black gown and a red stole. We discussed this at Policy Subcommittee, they affirmed his recommendation, and I just need a vote of the committee to make that change.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On the recommendation letter, it does indicate, what's the wording? I'm sorry, but doesn't it say must be ordered by, yeah, it's, sorry, caps and gowns need to be ordered in February to ensure delivery in time for graduation. Approval is needed ASAP, and that was January eleventh.
So we fitted them, we haven't ordered them.
Okay. Are we still able to order all these in time for graduation even though it's March first today?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
I was hoping to get this on last week and we didn't, but he can't, we fit, the fitting was the important piece. They have them, so we're good.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
And then, if I can just take, Dr. Jones had sent this to our Policy Subcommittee on modifying graduation caps and gowns, and his recommendation would be to go with an all-black gown and a red stole. We discussed this at Policy Subcommittee, they affirmed his recommendation, and I just need a vote of the committee to make that change.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On the recommendation letter, it does indicate, what's the wording? I'm sorry, but doesn't it say must be ordered by, yeah, it's, sorry, caps and gowns need to be ordered in February to ensure delivery in time for graduation. Approval is needed ASAP, and that was January eleventh.
So we fitted them, we haven't ordered them.
Okay. Are we still able to order all these in time for graduation even though it's March first today?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
I was hoping to get this on last week and we didn't, but he can't, we fit, the fitting was the important piece. They have them, so we're good.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
And then, if I can just take, Dr. Jones had sent this to our Policy Subcommittee on modifying graduation caps and gowns, and his recommendation would be to go with an all-black gown and a red stole. We discussed this at Policy Subcommittee, they affirmed his recommendation, and I just need a vote of the committee to make that change.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On the recommendation letter, it does indicate, what's the wording? I'm sorry, but doesn't it say must be ordered by, yeah, it's, sorry, caps and gowns need to be ordered in February to ensure delivery in time for graduation. Approval is needed ASAP, and that was January eleventh.
So we fitted them, we haven't ordered them.
Okay. Are we still able to order all these in time for graduation even though it's March first today?
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
I was hoping to get this on last week and we didn't, but he can't, we fit, the fitting was the important piece. They have them, so we're good.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. Fred?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Glenn?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And Beth?
Yes.
And then, if I can just take, Dr. Jones had sent this to our Policy Subcommittee on modifying graduation caps and gowns, and his recommendation would be to go with an all-black gown and a red stole. We discussed this at Policy Committee, they affirmed his recommendation, and I just need a vote of the committee to make that change.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. On the recommendation letter, it does indicate, what's the wording? I'm sorry, but doesn't it say must be ordered by, yeah, it's, sorry, caps and gowns need to be ordered in February to ensure delivery in time for graduation. Approval is needed ASAP, and that was January eleventh.
So we fitted them, we haven't ordered them.
Okay.[1652.13]